With the quorum of the planning board present, I call this meeting to order at seven forty-four P M. Tuesday, May eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. This is an open meeting of the planning board being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the outbreak of COVID nineteen virus. Specific information and general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public can be found on the town of Berlin website. The governor's order suspends the requirement of an open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows us encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the planning board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the public to join this meeting. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda after they're concluding, after they conclude their remarks. I'll invite board members by name to provide any comments, questions, penetrating insights and or motions. Please hold all your insights till your name is called. Board members and speakers on the agenda, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking, to speak clearly, to ensure accurate minutes are recorded, and for any response, please wait until you're yielded the floor and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in conversation with each other, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Thank you for your understanding and cooperation. So the first order of business is we were asked to opine on the letter that the Margaret got, what a selectman did to about Mary Porter's concerns about Highland Ridge. So there's been a couple of letters, this was marched around to a whole bunch of boards, not just ours. So police has said that they have seen increase of traffic, but they haven't really seen any incidents that would require any extraordinary means. He was gonna go and talk to them again, a little bit of more truck traffic, which you're gonna get during construction phases, I understand it. Fire department said that they didn't have any problems. I think was conservation or was it?
Conservation definitely was. Yeah, no, so Mary had mentioned a hydrology report.
Right.
A hydrology report isn't necessarily a standard thing that you do, especially with that amount of distance from the abutters. There were stormwater calc's that were done and that were approved way back when.
Right.
As far as the site management goes, that is not Casa Construction. That's a different operation. Russo Brothers and our environmental monitor has said he has rarely seen a job so well done.
Good, okay.
They, he doesn't feel they've cut any trees that they didn't need to. Which was certainly definitely one of the concern, it's just, it's just shocking to look at from what it was, but and there's still a couple of things that we're waiting for from Casa. But none of them are related to Mary's concerns.
Okay. Well, the items that would probably be picked up by us. Parking spaces were inadequate for the number of homes. Passive energy infrastructure. There was no provision for common land, which I don't think that's entirely true. I think there is some common land that's there. The clubhouse is being placed at the furthest point, but we wouldn't have any say on where the clubhouse gets located. Sidewalk provisions for residents, I think that there is sidewalks going to be in there because I think that they were talked, they talked about the sidewalks being with a Cape Cod berm at the edge and not a hard edge. Or even some painted stuff because they were worried about turn radiuses for some of the emergency vehicles. They were gonna be painted, remember?
I definitely remember a town meeting, Chris Slade wanted to keep it a little bit more low impact. The whole thing, so I don't, I would almost be sure there's not granite curbing sidewalks.
Definitely isn't.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I mean, we permitted the project, it was presented to us with information that was reviewed by outside counsel in the form of engineers that looked at, you know, road widths, calculations, stuff that, you know, for our zoning, there was findings, there was a a vote to, there was a public hearing, there was a vote to accept the plan, there was an appeal period. So unless we're, you know, being presented with violations, which the zoning enforcement officer, i.e. the building inspector would pick up on, I don't know as if there's much more that we as a planning board needs to say or should say about it. You know, the fact that the units may be a little bit small, the configurations don't really allow for aging in place and stuff like that. We knew that that stuff was being presented that way, so I don't know as if it's our position or what we should be opining on at this point.
Right, we don't really get to tell them how to build their units anyway, right? We can tell them what we'd like to see, but and when this project was designed and approved. What was that, ten year, was it ten years ago? Maybe not quite ten years ago, but.
No, the first, when the first plans were, yeah, when the first plans were, were, you know, pushed around or alluded to or whatever, it was probably ten years ago. But Jim's right, when they first started meeting with us and stuff like that, it was three or four years ago.
Right.
Janet is in the audience.
Jan, Janet is in the audience.
So is anybody else feel any different than I do on what I just surmised? Or summarized?
I missed what what you, a lot of what you said, but I think the in the future, if we looked at a project like this, we we might ask some questions that we didn't ask this time. The trouble this time is that you add one proponent that generalized about the project, but then sold it to another, so you know, you end up with multiple players over time, it gets
But what's the difference between that and Brooklyn?
Yeah.
Same, same.
Same thing.
Same thing.
Yeah.
You know, and, and I mean, we could, we could say that, yeah, the units are bigger and, you know, there are bedrooms on the first floor and perhaps the whole program was a little bit different and whatever, but you know, the economics of making something go change.
Yeah.
All the time, so it's not the same project.
How much, how much responsibility or authority do we have over the design of the units?
We can probably make suggestions, but we can't dictate.
No, the only way it would be going forward if we were to begin to generate language that spoke more specifically to design, but that gets, that gets pretty complex. I mean, if we were gonna do a project that wasn't an over fifty-five, but was workforce housing, like, you know, Ron was talking about, we might very well say, you know, the square footage needs to be held below this amount for fifty percent of the units or something like that, which.
Right, and for over fifty-fives to include language requiring fifty percent of the units have a first floor bedroom. Because it does make it my concern, and this was pointed out by someone at the Conservation Commission, without it being designed for aging in place.
Right.
What happens when seniors don't want to move in there?
But isn't that what market forces and economics work?
Sure, but you know, in ten years.
Yeah.
And they're not gonna rebuild them.
No.
So then they're gonna come and ask for them to be reclassified.
Yeah.
Me, I think that that would be a real struggle because now they have to go before a town meeting and everything else.
Yeah.
But people are gonna, people are gonna say, well, they're already built, what are we gonna do, we're gonna let, can't let them sit empty, that, you know, kind of the dirt parking lot over on River Road, the same, you know, gotta do something.
Well, I agree that we might want to include language that accommodates aging in place for the types of units that are gonna be built in an over fifty-five, so that that that's incorporated from the start. I would still assume that over fifty-five units, given the demographics that we see in the next, you know, twenty years, over fifty-fives are still gonna be a hot item for some time to come, even if they don't accommodate aging in place. But I think we could, we could certainly modify the, the overlay district language that would require some accommodation for aging in place in ways that we don't require now, and it seems like that wouldn't be a hardship going forward on a builder necessarily.
If we don't, if we don't have in our zoning bylaw that you know, there's some feature, design features are required when we're doing the site plan review, can we require them? Anyways?
We have more for commercial than we have for residential. Dictated more on the commercial stuff.
Yeah.
On what stuff should look like.
But like, say we wanted, you know, some percentage of the units to have a ma, a first floor master suite, right? And that was not in the bylaw, but it's something we wanted, can we require that?
Well, because it's an overlay and it's gotta go to town meeting, I think we could steer people in that direction and then have them go to town meeting with those agreements in place, but it's unlikely we'll see another over fifty-five real soon that wants to move all the way through to town meeting. And I suppose that for us, it probably makes as much sense to include some of that language in the bylaw as a, you know, Warren article for some time in the neck, you know, the next town meeting or whatever. Because I imagine there's some models that we could pick up from, from other towns that we could just cut and paste some pretty clear language about aging in place.
So back to Mary's letter, I think Mary has a lot of good points, I just don't know that there's anything that can be done about a lot of the issues she brought up.
I agree. So I suppose you want me to craft a response back to Margaret and so that they have something on record from the planning board?
Yeah, that'd be good.
That we reviewed it and we talked about it and we feel it was, you know, permitted properly and there are some points there that perhaps in the future we may change, but currently there's not much we can do and any violation of any agreed upon items, then basically our, our hands are tied.
Yeah, they're requiring two roads to avoid the Suez Canal effect.
What'd you say?
To require two roads to avoid the Suez Canal effect, you know, if someone who's got car like mine turns sideways and you can't get by. Is that something that we would be able to require a site plan review without that being in the bylaw, or would we have to change the bylaw to say that?
Do you wanna put more, multiple roads, multiple access points into the complex?
Yeah. How would we get, how would we?
I would think that there'd be some people that would not think that paving more of the site is a good idea.
I seem to remember that, yeah. Some of the abutters absolutely did not want a second road.
Exactly, or clear cut more land or whatever. I can tell you one thing, if there's a car across the road and the fire department's making a response, they're gonna yank that sucker right out of the way.
But if we wanted to require that, would it have to be in the bylaw, or is it something we have discretion at the time of site plan review to require?
I bet we could do it at site plan review.
Yeah, I think so.
I don't think it would need to be in the bylaw.
Sometimes the fire department requires it.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, they'll drive up on the, on the, on the grass and go around it if they had to.
Right. Not if it's in the giant causeway.
That's true.
Long way to the bottom.
You know where that car's gonna be.
Yeah.
All right, well, that's what we'll do, we're bumping up on our continuation of the of the hearing for Amos Wheeler Drive. So is there? Let me say something.
Uh, I, I, ooh. Something happened, I just got an error message and I'm if I you host, co-host right now, just in case something bad happens to me, to my computer, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, they demand money to turn your service back on?
My whole screen went blank. Uh, I know. That was weird, and I did elevate Janet and then she disappeared.
Oh, okay, well, we need, do we need a motion to open the hearing, or can we just open the hearing?
You can just open it.
Okay.
If we continue it to this, yeah.
Pardon?
We continued it, so.
Okay, but we voted to continue it.
Yeah.
All right, well, we, I declare the hearing is open, so is, if Seth is in the audience, can you promote him, please?
I can. There's Seth, anybody else? Or that's it for now?
Um, let's, let, let me ask, when he gets elevated, he's on mute right now. Hi Seth, how are you?
I'm well, how are you guys?
I'm good, thank you. Do you need anybody else elevated at this point, or?
Uh, if Duncan Baum, the applicant, is here, in case there's any questions directly to him, but other than that, truthfully, our, our changes were relatively minor and I can run through them quick when the board has a moment.
Yeah, that's what I would like first, before we take questions and answers, if you could just give us where your findings are, walk through the changes that you're going to make, and we can go from there.
Sure, great, so this is Seth Donahoe with Dillison Roy, I'm here on behalf of Duncan Baum for the development at one twenty to one twenty-eight Highland Street. Last time we spoke, this was previously titled Duncan Drive, as we entered the process, instead of calling it Road A, we just named it after the applicant. After some discussion, the name Amos Wheeler Road, which was Duncan's grandfather, that, that was approved by the town. And so we've submitted revised plans that reflect the, the appropriate road name on it and title sheet on it. And then the only other action item, when we last met, in a butter to the west had commented that there is a drain that discharges onto the applicant's property, and we were asked to go out and locate that. We were able to recover it, there is a broken plate pipe that is at the fringe of the road grading, the western side of our proposed grading. And so we've added a note to our plan that where that is damaged, the remnants of the pipe, we're gonna replace that with a suitable modern pipe. And also noted that because the road within that area is in fill, we do not anticipate encountering more of it nor damaging, in fact, it would be the opposite, we're going to protect it by putting more cover on it. But we've added a note that if any other pipe portion is encountered during the construction, we'll replace that as well to ten feet either side of the road. So the applicant's okay with allowing the existing drain to remain, we had discussed last time that it's not an easement, but he's okay with it being there. And then our own road drainage will be mitigated via stormwater management system and full compliance with the town's bylaws.
So there's.
Our only changes.
So one quick question for you, so the there's not going to be additional water discharging off the property or anything else when you restore this pipe?
No, there will not, so it, it's questionable if the, the pipe is even functional, I stuck my hand in it and it's pretty blocked up. It did not have any flow going through it at the time of the visit, so if it does, it's, there's a couple places where it could discharge, we couldn't find an obvious daylight point, it, it may actually be exactly what we saw, the remnants of a pipe, and it just simply bubbles over higher up in the property. So it would match existing conditions at this point, we're not going to pipe it into our stormwater system and convey it to our stormwater system, it would be basically replacing in kind.
Okay, so whatever conditions exist now for runoff from the property, you're not going to increase or decrease, it'll remain the same for what they, what's there. Anything that you generate from your road, you're going to collect and put into your, your detention basins and mitigate it that way, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Are there, is there curbing on the side of the new road?
So we have a Cape Cod berm. And then there's catch basins that set intervals along it.
What's a Cape Cod burn?
A bituminous bone, a curve.
So any, any water that's running down the road that might have road salt in it or whatever, it's not going to the abutters property, it's gonna go, it's gonna be captured by the burn and run into the drains that you have in the roadway?
Correct, so it's actually going to be piped the exact opposite direction, so the, the abutter that had the concern was to the west of the roadway, and then our drainage system is to the east of our proposed roadway, so we'll be collecting everything, treating it and infiltrating and discharging it away from that property.
Okay. So I guess if that's it for the changes in your presentation or anything else, is there any other of the members have questions or comments about the changes or anything that was discussed the last time? Mr. Wheeler?
So the, you have identified a pipe that's broken, but it doesn't have any flow. You're, and you're gonna replace the broken pipe with something comparable, what, what are we talking about, a ten-foot section, a five-foot section of?
I mean, it would be at least a ten-foot section, that, that's what the, the newer plastic pipe, a PVC pipe that's suitable for that.
Right.
And they can excavate further, it can certainly be a condition that they, they trace it further till it's intact and whole.
So we replacing under the proposed road or back through the property to the abutters line?
So the, the property, can I share my screen, would that be all right?
That'd be great.
You're gonna show where this is proposed or where this is, where you located it?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so hopefully you can see my screen.
Yeah.
Great, so this clouded area is where there is the remnant of the pipe, and it appears to be running, we can call it a northwesterly direction, it would be presumed the topography of the site, this, this area is the existing lower point of the site, and that's where we're discharging our drainage. It would be assumed that it outlets somewhere in this vicinity or potentially on the other side, but it's not there, and the other thing too is our infiltration basin, that's actually at grade as well. So everything we're putting in, in the vicinity of this, we're not going to cut and damage anything that's there, it would be the opposite, we're, we're going to build up over it.
So right. If you could just go back to the map, the plan for a second?
Yep.
So that clouded area is where you, that photograph is, correct?
Correct.
And you said it runs parallel with the road?
Roughly, it, it appears to be running in this direction.
Okay.
If my cursor's showing up.
Yeah, it is.
That's the orientation of the pipe, again, it is pretty plugged up, it's clearly broken, so I reached in as far as I could to get a feel for the, the length of it, but that, that appears to be it.
Right, and that's going downhill, right?
Correct.
So that's not draining the pond on the abutters property?
The, the fringes of the wetland line for the pond are in this area here, that the pond looks to be at a slightly lower elevation than what this pipe is.
I see.
There, there is an outfall within this bordering vegetated wetland, there's an existing outfall in there. We're, we're obviously not doing any work in the vicinity.
Of the clay pipe?
It appears to have been passed at some point, it's, it's cast iron now.
Okay.
So what would the purpose of the clay pipe have been, if it's above the pond and?
I, I mean, it could, it could be, the abutters house is in that area, I'm not sure if these properties were in common ownership and they were, had the ability to drain each other's fields or structures in that direction. I, I mean, it would make perfect sense, it is a low spot between the two properties.
But there was nothing recorded at the registry of deeds, right?
That's correct, no, there's, there's no easement of any sorts for that.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it seems like if the water was coming off the road to that spot, by putting a new driveway in with the drainage built in, it's actually gonna be better, there's gonna be less water flowing onto the neighbor's property.
So that would be a reasonable assumption here, that there's two catch basins right at the entrance of Amos Wheeler Road. They will connect or collect what's coming off the, we'll call it the apron that goes on to Highland Street. And then there's a series of catch basins down the road that will collect additional runoff from the new impervious surfaces, and again, convey that to the east.
Yeah.
So that pipe is gonna be chased and replaced in, in the orientation that it currently is?
Correct.
Okay.
May not actually do anything though.
Right. And certainly after the road is built.
Yeah.
Right, anything that it would have done, the road will now do.
It would kinda be a belt and suspender scenario, where if it was catching that, then we have something else that's, that's newer and more modern materials that will take that burden off that.
Yeah, and I can see why you might be concerned about runoff from the road with salt in it getting into his garden, because it runs right next to the new proposed road in a parallel to it. New proposed road kind of parallel to it. But it doesn't sound like any of that water is going to find its way there. Seems like the problem is solved.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments or want to make an observation, board members?
You know, I'm pretty comfortable. I I'm I'm interested in. Just catching the ear of the highway superintendent. Just to make sure. We haven't. Since the town is going to accept this road. I've been sending him the information about it and. I I didn't call him. I'm wondering if he's. Getting my emails, you know, with the because I sent some last weekend again this week and. But I'm perfectly willing to call him and just. Say. If there's anything that he sees that we've missed, we'd we'd like to know about it. In general, I think he. You know, he's. You know, we we went and approved the road on. Off of. Sent off of West Street that. He's overseen the construction of that and evidently our. Subdivision control law addresses enough of the issues that. Make it possible to build a road that's sufficient. I've often wondered whether. How outdated our subdivision control law is. When when you work with other towns, Seth, do you? Find that ours is fairly deficient or is it similar to what a lot of people?
No, it's it's way too much. To be honest, the the grade requirements, pavement surface, every everything is very similar in line. The width of the right away is actually in excess of of many surrounding towns. You require 60 foot. Right away for, I believe it's any size road. Whereas a lot of surrounding towns, there's depending on number of lots, it could be as little as 40 feet. And then variable with the amount of traffic. So that in my eyes, that's the major difference, but. Almost all of these projects are subject to mass stormwater standards or something higher. And that's that's kind of the controlling thing at this point.
Good, good. Thank you for your honesty, Scott. I mean, Seth.
Oh, anytime.
Okay, so at this point of the board doesn't have any more comments, then I would like to open it up to. Anybody that's on participating, if they would. Anybody have any questions or comments that are in the audience that? Who wants Seth to address and or the proponent at this time? I don't know. Carolyn, can you see anybody that has raised their hand or?
No one has raised their hand yet.
Okay.
So we have someone in the audience who the name is just showing up as admin. I'm gonna allow them to talk, but they should introduce themselves.
Please state your name.
Hi, this is Mike Mitchell. Sorry, it says admin.
Okay.
If it says, if I knew how to change it, I'd change it.
That's fine. I'm glad to know that you're here.
I'm here, but I keep losing you guys. My screen keeps freezing.
I'm gonna rename you just for the record. Okay.
So I guess my first question is anyone else having their screen freeze? Am I the only one?
Generally, that is your wifi going in and out.
Okay.
Your your internet. Yeah.
Yeah, it's it's not. Yeah, it's not particularly fast. Um, I wanted to, well, I wanted to thank Seth for. Walking the property and finding a pipe. I think he found the wrong pipe. I have no clue what he found. But if you look at, if somebody could put C three dot zero one up on their screen, maybe Seth, you could do that.
Or I'd like me to switch to the requested sheet.
If you, well, if you could, if that's okay with the planning board.
Fine by me.
All right, should be there.
I can see it.
Yep, I can see it too. Um, the the pipe that my drainage pipe. Actually, if you look where it's where you can see my pole barn on the left hand corner of that screen that that building.
Okay.
Okay, in front of that pole barn, about 75 feet, maybe 50, 75 feet. That's labeled existing abutting structures. Just about right below where the word structures is. Is a is where the drain pipe connects back to my pond. The pond is a Berlin fire hole. That drain pipe has a inspection port and I checked it today and there's plenty of water running through it. That pipe continues over towards, if you see that part that says. If you can move your move move it so that we can see the bottom more of the bottom wrong direction, opposite direction. Perfect. That's well, that's good. Thank you. If you can visualize the word Amos Wheeler Road, the A. About where the A is in Amos Wheeler Road is where it broke. It's broken three times since since I've lived here. That was the first place it collapsed. It goes under the ground and it's perpendicular. To what the proposed Amos Wheeler Road is, but right where that letter A is in Amos is pretty much my guess of where the pipe goes and continues. So it sounds like, sounds to me like Seth found something up by the note that says, I think parcel B in that area. So we're talking about four or 500 feet away at the bottom of the hill. That's that's where there's a it's a clay pipe. And I've got flow on my end, so it's got to be going someplace underneath Duncan's and it would be emptying out. My guess is down towards. There are three buildings pictured. Which says, I think, existing something structures. Exists where it says existing septic leaching area. It is probably in that area, right around that area is where I'm guessing. Right below that is where it actually comes out. There will be a clay pipe coming out of the ground where it enters the wetlands, the ditch. And then it flows down past two other neighbors' properties down to a small pond that ran the road. And then it goes underneath Randall Road and continues down into a steam Benson's pond. So. I think what Seth found was a was some sort of a pipe. But it wasn't the pipe that we're referring to. The one that we were talking about, the drain pipe is four or 500 feet away from that. And Seth, I'd be happy to show you where it is. You know, if you if you want to come over.
I I actually, if I could address to the board, we added a note to the the very same sheet that we were just looking at. That any portions of pipes that are encountered during this construction are to be replaced. It sounds like what we've seen on site are mostly clay pipes. Not in the best of shape. It sounds like this other pipe is a clay pipe and it really should be replaced. So we're offering to do that as as part of this construction. If we encounter a clay pipe, then we will certainly. Replace it and that's to 10 feet either side of the road. So you'd have the essentially 40 feet of length minimum. Of new pipe where our construction is going to occur.
This is Mike Mitchell. I mean, that seems pretty reasonable. Would you put a manhole or something in there? So there's an inspection port and if you had to. If you had to snake it, that you could, you know, go down the manhole and snake it one direction or the other. Because that's what I had to do once before is I had to snake it and I snaked it up to the where where I now have an inspection port. That's as far as my snake would run, big mechanical snake. And and that turned out to be one of the best things I did was put in inspection port. I can actually just lift the top off and see the water flow. So could you put in a manhole or something where you could? My biggest concern is if it backs up, it will flood my backfield and I've I've had it happen before.
So we would be happy to put cleanouts on either side of the roadway. So that this pipe, again, the roadway is in fill, so it's significantly higher, which will actually serve to protect. The the pipe in that area. Where the the pipe flanks, the roadways where we're not grading, where we're not disturbing. We can put a cleanout in on either side of that and that would be a a modern PVC cleanout that would be capable of being snaked as well. So I think that would address the the long term viability of this portion of the pipe.
That sounds good to me. I mean, my my biggest concern is to keep the water flowing. Although it is a it is a fire pond for the town of Berlin. You know, I I don't want to necessarily flood my entire field. You know, if it if it gets a if it gets plugged, I'd like and it flows and by mosquito control, people come down there about every five or seven years and clean it out. So I think flowing, having it continue to flow is smart in terms of mosquito control as well. It keeps it from becoming a stagnant pool of water. So I Seth, that that sounds great to me if that snake is something that you could, or sorry, if you're cleaning out or something, you could snake it in either direction. Clean it out and putting in putting in modern pipe sounds like a good idea to me.
We're happy to do it and we appreciate your input.
I'm sorry.
Like, Mike, when you've repaired the broken pieces in the past, how what depth were they?
You know, it wasn't that deep. It was. On my property, it's probably four feet down. There's a bunch of ledge there, so it kind of runs on top of the ledge. On Duncan's property, right at the base of the of the what he calls farm road now that that little hill he goes up. To get to the four acre piece. That was like two and a half, maybe three feet down, as I recall. It wasn't that far down and the clay tiles. Were, it wasn't so much that they were broken. It was they were like misaligned almost and had gotten plugged. So, you know, we dug it down. I think we, as I recall, we didn't have a backhoe back then. I think we did by hand and then strained it out, cleaned it out and. And so far, that's worked. So I'm guessing it's like three, three feet down, two and a half, three feet down from the surface, as I recall, but it was it was quite a long time ago. Are we, am I still, can you hear me?
Yes.
I see Carolyn smiling. I do have also a question about my well. And also I did, I sent, I think all of you people probably have gotten a copy, maybe Seth, you have it. I did contact the WPA and ask them if they have any records. But unfortunately, they're still under COVID rules. And so they're, they responded back and they they told me to. You know, where where they could look. They thought it would be a pretty easy thing once they get back in action, but until they. Are released from COVID rules, they can't do any non digital work, stuff before the digital age occurred, which is my profite stuff. So I I sent an email to, I think to the board. I responded. It was today that I sent it in the afternoon. So. That's a copy of the letter from this fellow that I received about the WPA. So we have that in the file. I did talk to Bill Brookings too, and I think I don't know if anyone received that that email conversation. No one, okay. So I called the Board of Health basically and they said, you know, contact Bill Brookings and I did and he called me back and. I I sent notes off to. Off to him just to make sure I got the conversation correct. Let me just see what I can grab my note here. So so what Bill said is he says that there is an offset to place to well. He said it was 50 feet from property line and I and I just wanted him to confirm that I heard everything correctly because. I was out in the middle of barn and I was writing on a paper bag, so it wasn't the best to take notes. He doesn't know if the well offset can be applied to an existing well is what he told me. So suggesting it maybe the the planning board find out more about. Well offsets, do they apply to just new wells only or do they apply to existing wells? He wasn't certain. He did suggest getting our well tested at just as a start for a baseline to make sure that if there is any. Problem with contamination or poisoning of the well, that we have a baseline and I I told him that's a great idea and I'd be happy to do that. He suggested checking with the DT DPW to see if there are records of the drainage pipeline. That was the previous conversation. I haven't done anything there, but it sounds like maybe maybe the planning board can check to see if they have any. Records of a drainage ditch being put in that. Amos Wheeler's property probably is when that was that was happening. There was one on the right and offhand, I don't. One other, I missed it. I just didn't. And this is notes I don't have it in here, but go ahead.
Has the septic been approved for this, Seth?
No, so the the two lots are or the development areas are quite a bit removed from. Where the roadway is going. They're they're both 25 plus acre lots. Both have had soil testing witnessed by the Board of Health and that'll meet all required offsets. That the Board of Health requires. So that would that would include wells, lot lines, everything. It would meet all current offsets.
And as.
Current standards then?
Yes, it would meet the town's current standards.
Okay.
Right, right. And so and as we already confirmed, anything from the road is going to go in the opposite direction. And be treated in a basin before it infiltrates the ground.
Correct, in the opposite direction. So.
Right.
See, I do. I realize that everybody doesn't have the benefit of going on the site, but it there is a farm road there. It's used by equipment of all sorts and materials go up and down there. Having a a new modern roadway with curbs and a stormwater collection system. In my opinion, would be beneficial to the butter's well as opposed to continuing moving agricultural material up and down the accurate road that's there now.
So Seth, this is Mike Mitchell. Can you still hear me, Carolyn?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. I have a question. I'm looking at C three dot zero one. And I just may not understand the print, but it looks to me like it it's higher. And then it drains down towards that stone wall. On the left, is that is that correct? Are those little topology lines?
So the the road is there's proposed grading lines on the plan. The road is in plain terms approximately four feet. Higher than existing grade through through much of the area that's we're discussing here. What the road does have though is is it's crowned like a regular road. So. The runoff goes to the side where it's collected in a gutter, which is made up by by the curbing here. So there's a a six inch high. Impermeable obstruction that will then force everything to the catch basin. So it will not be. The road runoff will not be running over the curb and onto the butter's property. It'll be collected. In the gutter, in the catch basins and then moved in the opposite direction.
Okay, thank, I appreciate you explaining that. That makes that makes sense to me. Thank you for explaining that. The the other note that Bill said is he said typically wells, drilled wells do not get contaminated. He said, except for in Lancaster. They had. A few wells that did get contaminated. They were previously existing wells and they got contaminated by roadwork that was done. And so he said that I had a valid concern to be worried about it, although he says it usually doesn't happen is what he told me. So he said, but you have a valid concern because it happened in Lancaster in more than two wells. Apparently it was up by Route two is what I thought he said. So I guess my my question still goes. If we, if if Seth could. Find a different pipe when they have water flowing through it because that's what is happening with my my pond is draining. find a different pipe when they have water flowing through it, cause that's what is happening with my, my pond is draining. Uh, at the bottom and, uh, and that gets replaced, that would be terrific. And, um, and on the existing well setbacks, um, I'd like to ask if the, the planning board could, uh, figure out if the existing well setbacks, if that's only for new construction, or if that's for existing wells as well. And maybe give, uh, the Board of Health, uh, uh, you know, that, you know, what they find out and provide the feedback to the Board of Health.
Okay, but my, the, from my understanding or what our understanding was of what Seth just said a few minutes ago, and correct me if I'm wrong. If I misheard him, that any septic or well for the proposed dwellings will be well away from setbacks that are current setbacks, current acceptable setbacks.
For the existing properties up on the four acre piece is absolutely correct. For the road, the road is going right up next to the stone walls that we have. If you were out, go out and take a look at it. Uh, you stand on Duncan's property and, and look at that driveway that he put in. They, they call it farm road now. The, uh, on the left of that, uh, driveway is a existing stone wall, which is approximately the boundary. That's, that's where my well is. My, so my well is probably, you know, six or 700 feet away from, uh, the four acre piece. And where they're planning to, to do their septic work and all that stuff. So I think the four acre piece, the septic stuff has nothing to do with me. I'm not even concerned about it. I'm concerned about the road, if the town salts the road, um, you know, that's things getting into my well, because my well is, wow, it's 15 feet away from that, uh, from. Well, sorry, Amos Wheeler drilled it? My wife says Amos Wheeler drilled it. I, I don't know if that's the case or not. But it is 15 feet from, uh, this, uh, proposed new road, the Amos Wheeler Road. So why, we're, we're a hundred, we're actually, yeah, my well's about a hundred feet away from the road, from Highland Street. It's a, and I thought I had sent, maybe you guys just didn't get any of the attachments. I, I thought I had sent my plot plan. And it's 151 feet from the road, roughly, from Highland Street. But it is 15 feet away from, uh, the, the, the boundary of, uh, Amos Wheeler Road, Duncan, the Duncan bomb road. So, but my concern is it's that close.
Any of the road runoff run down that farm road now?
It does, it does. Uh, there, there is some sort of catch basin that from the other side of the street over on, um, uh, Elsie Wheeler's property there. And I'm not certain, certain exactly where it leads to or where it goes. I don't, I don't know. It's just, uh, it goes underground somewhere. Water collects and goes underground. And I think it dumps out onto Duncan's land, but I can't tell you where.
As we were, we were talking about this earlier and it, it seems that with this new road in place, with the berms and the drainage system built in, it should reduce the amount of road runoff that goes anywhere near your well, because it's all gonna go down the hill to the catch basin instead of running down that farm road.
Yeah. So those, those catch basins are on, around the, uh, the left of that road or the right of that road? When you look at.
Both.
I'm sorry, both?
Yeah, there's two of them at the top of the hill. And I think there's two of them down near the bottom of the hill, but the ones at the top of the hill would presumably pick up all the water coming off of the road.
Okay, so they're on.
But they drain, they drain in the opposite direction from your property.
Yeah, they, that's right.
So you'll get, you'll get less runoff from Highland Street than you do now.
Can you just explain how it would drain in the opposite direction? They're gonna go underneath the road? Is that what they're gonna do?
Yeah.
Correct.
They're on the drawing. There's pipes under the road and they, they lead to that catch basin down at the bottom.
Okay, that's still, that, I, I think that's good. I still just don't want to see my well or, I mean, uh, you know, that's.
Right.
I don't want to see my property, uh, contaminated in any way by, you know, salt or anything like that. I did have one other question. When they put in this road, is, is this, uh, the Amos Wheeler Road? When they put in that road, is it only going to serve those houses and it'll never, is that just a way of opening up the entire back 60, 70 acres there to more development? Or is it just for, uh, just those houses, the, the four properties that, uh, Max, that Duncan said he would, uh, be building?
I can address that to the board. I just, I know it's a big property and there has been some speculation, but this is a strictly Duncan's family home. He wants to build a second home back there. We're proposing two lots right now. And the most it'll be under current zoning is two additional lots. That's even if the family chooses. So it would be four lots at most, but all we're proposing right now is two.
So then, then the other part of that question, Seth, um, does that, let's say somebody else comes in and they say, hey, well, okay, we got Duncan's four properties up there. But boy, now we can now add to this road and get additional frontage. We'll just build another road. Can, can they add to that and, and do more things? I mean, I'm, I'm like, I'm thinking about behind my house. Go ahead.
So Seth, the length of that cul-de-sac now is gonna be what?
It's, uh, 499 feet. And as you know, the, the town has a maximum allowable of 500 feet cul-de-sac. So we cannot extend it.
So Mike, that, the only way that road could be extended is if it were to continue on through Duncan's property and God knows who else is and end up over on Randall Road or something. I mean, it's, it's, or Coburn, I guess. It's, it, it would have to be a, a road that went somewhere to connect with some other road that already exists. It, we can't extend that road any further as a cul-de-sac.
Oh, good. Thank you. Thanks, Tim. So, so then the, then the traffic, the maximum traffic coming up there is going to be for the max of the four houses that, uh, let's say you built all four houses. That would be the max I would ever really expect in terms of traffic on the, on the side of my house. Let's see, yes, Carolyn. I'm sorry.
Would you say, Tom?
Unless he throws a graduation party.
He can have graduate. He probably have a big party if, if he gets this approved.
Probably invite you.
Uh, you don't know Duncan and I, I would, I would come if he asked. Uh, I, I, thank you so much for, uh, letting me, letting me talk and changing me from admin. I hate to be demoted, but.
Um, or, uh, did you get all of your questions answered?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, let me just, let me just see if I understood. Seth is, has found a pipe, but it wasn't the pipe we were talking about. Um, he's gonna go take a look at the bomb of that. And if he needs to replace that section with modern piping at the bottom of that road, Amos Wheeler Road, he'll do that. My big concern is, um, I want to make sure that the, that that pipe continues to flow. I mean, I'd love to have something written into the proposal that, you know, that we note that that is an existing, pre-existing drainage. And that it needs to be continued. And, uh, I mean, if there is an easement or something, it needs to be granted to make sure that that happens. I would like to see that happen. Then I, I would worry less about it. It sounds like the, from the road from Highland Street, that, uh, you said that there's going to be catch basins on either side uh, of, of that Amos Wheeler Road. And they're gonna be, uh, going, uh, to the west, well, no, to the right of the diagram, which would be over to Duncan's property rather than mine. Seth said that there's gonna be a curving that will help contain the, the water, uh, from the road. Mike's biggest concern was, you know, he doesn't want to have to poison as well, because he doesn't know where else he would drill another well. And that well is functioning. I'd just like to continue to have it stay functioning. And it also, we have an organic farmer. I'd like to make sure that I use no chemicals on my farm. And, uh, so I'd like to make sure that we keep that land as pristine as possible. So did I miss anything?
Nope, that's the goal.
Sounds like it.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you giving me time, time to talk. I also appreciate Seth, uh, you know, putting the print back up and, uh, and, and just seeing that the pipe that he located is, is not the one that I was, uh, I was even concerned about. It would be interesting to see where it went, but maybe that's, maybe that was part of the catch basin or something. Maybe that's not what, maybe it's not functioning.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Any other audience members that have a comment or hand raised or questions?
No hands.
No hands. Okay. Board members, are we okay? Anybody have any questions or comments?
Uh, do we put something in writing to make what we just talked about a requirement?
We can put it in order of conditions.
Yeah. And isn't easement required or not? Kind of interesting.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Isn't easement required? To do this, to run his drain underneath the new road?
I don't know. Is that a easement?
I'd, I'd like to just catch up with, um, the highway superintendent and what he would want to have on the, a, a plan that we would finally endorse that in regard to that drain.
Okay, we are more than happy to replace any pipes encountered. And as, as we discussed, we'll put a clean out on either side of our work area there. The, the easement issue is a little difficult for me as that's a private matter between two landowners. So, uh, Mr. Bomb, I, truthfully, I believe he's been pretty gracious by agreeing to repair this and allowing it to continue. So I, it's up to him if he wants to grant an easement, but that, at this time, that's not something that we could agree to.
Yeah. And there was never one before.
So isn't anything recorded? Yeah.
Yeah. So, uh, you know, I, I'll use the, the model, um, that we've used before in terms of drawing up the, the, uh, the decision on our part. And if it's all right with the board, I'll just check in with Dave and say, you know, we would like to have you just bless this before we finalize it. Cause if the town's gonna accept the road, we, we don't want Dave to come back and say to us afterwards, you know, why the hell did you do that? Why didn't you include this statement or that statement?
So what am I hearing? Are we continuing this hearing or are we going to take a motion to close it and then chat with him? How do we go about doing that?
I would make a motion to accept the plan.
Well, close the hearing.
Pending, yeah, pending.
We have, we have, we have time after we close the hearing to make our decision.
Right.
For the here itself. Do we close this hearing or do we continue it?
Well, if Dave wants to make changes.
Yeah.
I guess.
I mean, I, I'll begin to write the decision right now. And that would mean that when we met again, we could react to any thoughts that Dave might have, which I don't think are gonna be substantial if any. And, uh, and then vote on that decision at our next meeting, which is what we'd be doing anyway.
So this is what, this is what I would, I would like to see and then correct me if people don't agree or, or you can dissuade me. I think we should close this hearing and then it's a public meeting. So if somebody, it'll be on our agenda and it'll be published for when we discuss the decision and the documentation that Tim's going to work on after he consults with Highway. But the public part of it will be, will be closed. Obviously anybody from the public can make a comment and I regularly, generally meeting, but as far as the hearing itself, I think we can vote to close that.
Yeah, I agree.
Reasonable?
Yeah.
Okay. So if that's reasonable, then I will entertain a motion to close this hearing.
So moved.
Do we have a second? We have a second? We have a motion and a second and any more discussion and it's only to close the hearing. Seeing none, I will ask you to participate by roll call vote. Jay Teach.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Is Janet available?
She is not.
She isn't. All right. Tom Sanford, aye. So we voted to close the hearing. Seth will put you on the agenda for our next meeting, which is in two weeks at eight o'clock. We'll discuss any findings that, um, Highway has or any concerns, like Tim said, it probably won't be anything. And then we'll have the, uh, decision written, um.
And, and I'll circulate that draft, um, before, so Seth will have a copy of that to just go over and make sure he's in agreement with what we're putting down on black and white.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Awesome.
I work for you, Seth?
Yes, so we will see you on the 25th. And if there's any changes that come up, the discussion with Highway, I'll be happy to include those in the plans.
Perfect.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Grand, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're a little bit behind schedule. Um, is Chris Senney in the, uh, audience?
He is.
Can you elevate him? He is, uh, he's the next item on the, uh, agenda. We're about 20 minutes late, so he would like to talk about, um, some changes to River Bridge. And then, uh, some information that he has on traffic and the queue lines or the queue lengths for the, um, the drive up. Hi, Chris, how are you?
Good, thanks. How are you?
Good. I apologize we're late, but.
That's quite all right. Thank you for having me back on the agenda. I had asked to come back in connection with one of the warrant articles that River Bridge, uh, has on Monday night's agenda. Uh, as you know, the, the River Bridge articles will not be addressed on Saturday. When the town meeting opens, they will be addressed on Monday evening just following the, uh, the article on the, um, local wetland protection bylaw. And one of those articles is our citizens petition to allow two drive up, uh, food related windows at River Bridge. And the last time we were here, the board asked me about the queuing of cars. And what would happen if, if there were just too many cars, uh, that would actually back up onto River Road West. I, some of you will remember Ron Mueller, who has been the traffic engineer we've worked with from the beginning of the River Bridge project. I forwarded to the board a letter that Ron, uh, sent, prepared for this purpose. And in that he summarizes some studies that have indicated that this kind of drive up window, on average, there are 11 cars in the queue, or they might be as many as, uh, 13 or thereabouts. And in his opinion, the, the two sites that we're talking about could accommodate the traffic. And I did, um, ask Ron if he would be willing to come to the site plan review. If this warrant article is adopted at town meeting, and he said he certainly would come. He would participate in site planning for these two drive up windows if the voters approve it. Uh, and at that time, in a detailed and careful site plan analysis, you could, you could require a formal study of circulation and traffic and including the queues. So, um, I was hoping that would be helpful. We're not in site plan review at this moment. Uh, we're headed for town meeting where we'll find out if the voters want to approve this. So I, I was hoping that that short treatment of this question by Ron would, would satisfy you for now.
I'm okay. I mean, it, it's information that we didn't have, so I appreciate that. Um, you know, we can debate whether it should be 11, 15 or 27. And we're not gonna solve that between now and next Monday. So.
Right, right.
Um, I think that there's, um, a spotlight on it. And I think that it'll be really scrutinized by several eyes. So I'm comfortable that, you know, we take the first hurdle and then we get to the next hurdle after that.
Yes, and I went back and read the part of the village overlay district bylaw on site plan. Yes, and I went back and read the part of the village overlay district bylaw on site plan review to see just how much teeth there is for the planning board to really very carefully make sure that each phase of River Bridge is planned carefully and will work in terms of circulation and safety. And it's quite strong, the language in our overlay zone. And as you know, the approach we take here is that we don't go through special permitting. So site plan review under the village overlay bylaw is kind of a greater level of scrutiny than site plan review normally is. It's really a kind of special permitting, even though we don't need a special permit. So the tools that you need to make sure if the voters want this, it can be site planned carefully and safely, you have. The other piece of this that I wanted to report on is that you will recall that Ron Bavruska, the former member of the board pointed out an inconsistency in the warrant article. I then brought before you, the last time we met, some language that would cure that. And I promised to take that to Barry Eager, the town moderator, and ask him would he accept a floor modification of the article to alter it? And he has gotten back to me with his decision and he said that that's perfectly acceptable. It doesn't fall outside of the realm of the published article. And he pointed out that this grew out of the planning board's public hearing. And that's particularly important and required. And the reason we require a public hearing before your board is so that adjustments could be made if your board thinks they should be. So he's fine with the modification that I showed you the last time we met. And I do plan, I can't make that motion to amend from the floor because I'm not one of the citizens. But he explained to me that if one of the citizens who signed the petition will stand up and move to modify and says, and reads the modification and says, I'd like to have Christopher Senney explain it. The moderator would then recognize me and I could explain it.
Okay, good. Bill's a side of that one.
What's that?
Thanks, Ron.
No, Ron did a great.
Yeah, great catch.
He caught that, you know, that was in my haste that I didn't, I didn't pay enough attention to the full paragraph, but Ron caught that and I, I appreciate that. Good, that's really all I had this evening. I just wanted to get back to you on the drive up window. I know that your board must make a recommendation. Uh, that doesn't have to happen until just before town meeting and that can be any kind of recommendation in favor, opposed. It can even be a recommendation that the voters decide this question. Uh, but I usually, I think your board will have a, a meeting just before town meeting and and make some recommendation on it. So, uh, we understand that, that that hasn't happened and that's, that's fine. And, and I look forward to Monday night and, and I hope maybe we'll have success this time.
Okay. Does any board member have any comments? Mr. Wheeler has a comment.
Right now, there's a 45% chance of showers on Saturday at one o'clock. So there, there may be no town meeting on Saturday. I mean, they'll obviously have to make some decision. I would think on Thursday at the latest, I, they're gonna have to start setting up. If, if they canceled Saturday, then everything, Saturday would shift to Monday, which right now the forecast is for a nice evening. Which I would assume unless things flowed fairly quickly, would mean that articles on Monday might shift to the next night, which was Tuesday, but Tuesday is forecast for showers. So we may end up with a confused series of dates, so.
Can't we just cover the, cover it all with a tarp and have a rain delay?
What Sterling does is they meet at the airport, everybody sits in their car, they're all given clickers if they're registered voters. They tune their radio to a certain wavelength and pick up the meeting and then tailgate beforehand and then, uh, knack through the meeting and.
I like it.
Yeah, I mean, it's a great way to do it if you're stuck in this situation like this again, so. I loved it, it worked out great. They had quite a crowd, I guess. They may have gotten better attendance than they usually do, actually.
The novel chairs are more comfortable anyway.
Yeah. No mosquitoes.
Yep.
Thank you for that caution. I did enter on my calendar Tuesday night as well because I, I was aware that it could spill over into Tuesday night and whatever, whenever we get reached, we'll, we'll be there.
Okay, cool. Any other comments or anything from any of the other board members? No? Okay.
All right, thank you again.
No problem.
Appreciate it.
We will talk to you soon.
Okay, thanks, take care.
Yep, good night. Okay. We're back on schedule. So the, uh, the only other thing that we have on the, um, agenda is any timely items, so I think we're in pretty good shape. Um, I did print out the written, um, articles, proposals for, um, that we have to read in, so we can cut them up and we can hand them out. I don't know who wants to do what, we can draw a lot, so whatever you wanna say. The only thing we will need to do is, is the one, we should probably take a look at the one that we need to physically modify the marijuana one. And I think that can just be a matter of just crossing out a two and putting a three in there, but I don't know, that's, okay. And then, um, other than that, we need to probably hold a meeting off the publish it so that we can vote on whether we support the citizens petitions or not.
What time?
Well, I don't know, I mean, we can, we can do one of two things, we can do it tonight. If we're prepared, or we can, uh, hold a meeting 15 minutes before the town meeting.
I just assumed do it now and be done and then we can write up the reports. That's how, I mean, I don't know how other people feel.
Yeah, I'm
Fine by me.
Prepared to do it.
Do I have the language? I don't have the language for the citizens petitions. Do you have something there?
Yep, I'll dig up something.
I only have ours.
Is it in the town warrant?
It should be in the town.
It should be, yeah. Hold on, it's coming.
Your, your secretary is getting.
Yes, exactly, my administrative assistant. Yeah. Awesome, thank you. Alright.
So we know it's after your length.
Yeah, fortunately, no one has to read all that. Uh, okay, so do we need the whole thing read? Cause it's pretty long. The first one is all of this.
Well, I don't.
Right, so this is the requi- uh, River Bridge Townhouse requested zoning bylaw amendment, Article 34. And I can read the whole thing if you want me to.
Well, I think, I think we understand the gist.
Right, so, um, so the comment, these changes would allow the planning board to site plan review, insight plan review to convert up to 30,000 square feet of commercial space at River Bridge to up to 30 two-bedroom townhomes.
So to start this, I'll make a motion that we approve article, we support Article 34.
So by voting to support it, are we supporting the change?
Yes, so usually what the planning board does is it, it, we make a motion to approve.
Right.
Regardless of, um, what the outcome may be. And then i- it's easier for people to understand that we've either voted yes in our report to support it or we've voted no in our report to oppose it. So the motion is to support it. But the decision that we'll make based on our vote will, will make it clear that we either support or don't. Whereas if we, if I make a motion not to support and we approve that motion, then we're gonna say
Yes.
To not approve, you know, it just.
Yeah. Okay.
That's, that's why I phrased the language the way I did.
Okay.
But someone has to second it if.
Oh, second.
Okay, so a motion has been made to support Article 34 and seconded. Is there any further discussion by the board members?
You know, I'm not prepared to support 30 additional, um, townhomes on that lot. So I, I'm not comfortable with supporting this. It's, it's out of keeping with what the town initially supported, you know, when the zoning that we approved a decade ago and, um, we've modified that a couple times. And most of those modifications I, I felt comfortable with, but this one I believe is just this. It, it's just out of character with what we, uh, that mixed use village really begins to diminish in my mind if we were to prove this.
Right.
I certainly haven't made, haven't hidden my feelings or thoughts about this over the conversation. So I completely agree with Ta- uh, Tim.
Jay, do you have any comments or do you wanna call for the vote?
We get a, um, revision in the number of units. There were some discussions last week about, last time about.
Not.
Yeah, if they're, if they're gonna revise it, they'll do it on the floor.
Right, so we gotta go with what's published.
So this is the high density version.
Yeah.
Alright. I don't think I'm in favor of the high dens- density version.
Okay, so we ready to vote? I gotta do it by, um, roll call vote. So Carolyn McDonald.
No.
Timothy Wheeler.
No.
Jay Teach.
No.
And Tom Sanford, no. So Article 34, we do not vote to support it.
Correct. Now, Article 35 seems to also see if the town will authorize, will vote to authorize the select board to enter into a third modification of the development agreement with River Bridge as follows. Section 1.5 and 1.6 of the agreement, as altered by paragraphs one and two of the first modifications are deleted. The following paragraphs are substituted, 1.5. The residential components of the project shall include in the aggregate no more than 235 dwellings and a total of 390 bedrooms. All dwellings shall be limited to a maximum of two bedrooms each and 1.6 will be omitted. Affordable housing at River Bridge, a new section 1, 1.9.1 will be added after section 1.9 as follows. Notwithstanding any provisions of sections 1.7, 1.8 and 1.9 to the contrary. The following is agreed with regard to the particular lot at River Bridge known as assessors map lot, assessors map three, lot 13 at 65 River Road West. A presently vacant piece of land between the existing cafe, Three Bassett Road and Growing Room Daycare Center, 71 River Road West, which has there on the old liquor store. So long as allowed under the zoning bylaws, River Bridge or a successor may develop the parcel known as map three, lot 13 with up to 30 two-bedroom, two-story townhomes. If the planning board allows during site plan review, such townhomes to be placed, to be in place of yet to be developed commercial space at a ratio of one townhome to 1,000 square feet of eliminated commercial space. The parties agree that 10% of any such townhomes developed on this parcel shall be offered at rates considered by the state to be affordable under provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 40B and regulations enacted thereunder. And as prescribed in section four, 458.5 of the zoning bylaws. These affordable units are in addition to the 84 accredited, accredited, accredited affordable units located on map three, lot 13 dash two.
I move that we support Article 35.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion to support, uh, a mo- we have motion to support in a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, why you support that and not Article 34?
I don't.
Right.
It's the same language.
I just make the motion in favor, doesn't, I'm gonna vote.
Oh, I see.
Charlie always felt that this was the way to do it and I, I think it's true, it's
Makes it so.
Makes, makes it easier to understand.
Yep.
We ready to vote?
Yep.
Okay, we need to call, roll call vote. Carolyn McDonald.
No.
Timothy Wheeler.
No.
Jay Teach.
No.
And Tom Sanford, no. So zero in favor and four opposed.
Alright. Next one, River Bridge drive-throughs. To see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Burling zoning bylaw article 452, 454.2, by replacing the last sentence with the following. A mixed use village may include drive up facilities for banks, pharmacies and other retail and service uses and for a maximum of two food establishments.
I move that we support Article 36.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to support Article 36. Allah, drive up windows. Is there any further discussion?
I'm inclined not to support this, but I mean, I suppose someone could convince me that I'm foolish.
Do we need unanimity or?
No, 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 never.
Never?
Hello, Charlie used to have us vote and then if we didn't have unanimity, we'd vote again and have.
I remember him brow beating us though.
Oh yeah, I mean, he, and sometimes we disagree and vote and, and share that disagreement, but.
Very rarely though, we used to be lockstep.
Yeah.
He was, he was great, I loved him.
He was a, I got, I, I stumbled, oh, this is. He was a, I got, I I stumbled, oh, this is aside, I stumbled upon his resignation letter.
Oh.
It's hysterical. It says, Ron, I quit, Charlie. That's it.
How long ago was that?
Ah, I think it was like two thousand and six.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah, I was I was thumbing through some of Ron's paperwork that he gave me and that was there.
Well, he decided to nap at home.
Yeah, just a piece of notebook paper torn out of the notebook and that's it. So we have a motion in a second and we've had a discussion, so I will call the roll call vote.
I didn't get chance to thoroughly read the letter we got that you sent around yesterday.
Mueller's.
Yeah, what did that say?
What?
About the queuing.
I, yeah, I did, I didn't get that.
Oh, we should, we should share that with everybody.
Um, okay, I, yeah, I will send it around.
Well, let me, I can read it, it's not that long.
It's not, but again, it's like I said to Jay, if you can get anybody to support anything you want to say, as long as you pay them.
Did it say how many cars their design was gonna accommodate?
What did you say? Why do you keep forgetting?
I don't know, am I fading out? Did it say how many cars their design would accommodate?
Uh, eleven, between eleven and thirteen.
Yeah, based on a published study of drive-through queuing at a number of different land uses of average maximum queue at coffee shops found to be eleven vehicles and the eighty-fifth percentile maximum queue was thirteen. The study was performed, here you go, ready? At six different coffee shops, including four Starbucks and two Caribou Coffee Shops located in Minnesota and Kansas. More locally, drive-through queue studies have been performed at four different Dunkin' Donut coffee shops located in Malden, Kingston, and Drake it. And in Milford, New Hampshire, the maximum observed queue at three of these locations was eleven vehicles, while only one location experienced a queue of thirteen vehicles during the weekday AM peak hour. During the weekday PM peak hour, a maximum of six vehicles was observed. And during the Saturday peak hour, a maximum of ten vehicles was observed. A summary of the queue studies is attached to this letter. I mean, like Tom said, the you, all you gotta do is go to Clinton or Northborough and
Go to Hudson.
The queue lengths there and.
Yeah.
So, right, so it's not site-specific.
Right.
It's just saying, yeah, usually there's about eleven cars in line.
And if I look at Jay's study and I count thirteen cars, I'm in the parking lot, so.
Right.
I I don't see how Mueller's letter helped us.
I don't, I don't think it did.
It it helped to solidify my feeling about the fact that this site is not, it it's just not, it's gonna make a bad situation worse. And it it, you know, my personal feelings about having drive-throughs aside and my personal feelings about them continuing to not hear the decision that the town has made.
Or.
Yeah, it it, I I find that personally insulting as a resident of town. Um, all of that aside, they cannot ever, no matter how many studies are done, guarantee that it's not gonna be bad. And it's already bad. And I I just, I can't support it based on that alone. Personally.
That is good for them because it means it's more traffic through their window.
Well, sure, sure, and I don't begrudge them wanting that.
No.
But I do, but it, we didn't build the building. We didn't, you know, it it's, this is what you have and you can't ask us to help you make it more profitable at the detriment of the traffic situation for all of the rest of the residents. It's not our job to make them make money.
Ted, kinda like us to a point where we have the ability to approve or reject these requests based on something like how well they can accommodate, you know, the hundred-year flood of cars. Right? So instead of being no because this particular site doesn't seem to meet our requirements without having specific requirements, we would have potential for allowing a drop-up window if somebody really demonstrated that they weren't gonna create a traffic problem. It wouldn't be at those sites. We can't really do that because we're, you'd have to somehow modify the citizens position, petition, which we didn't create, right?
Right.
So we have to work with what we have.
Right.
So you're ready to vote?
They could knock the building down and build a different one. Would they, the allocation of space down there between the gas station property and the hotel, that was their doing, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I when we did the site plan review, when you listen to what you know, experts say about turning radius and accommodating cars, I I look at that site now and I think architecturally it's satisfactory. You know, lighting is satisfactory, signage is satisfactory, but access and and fluidity of traffic is 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 problematic. And part of that was the need to move the hotel as close to the circle as possible, because if you went further in the other direction, you ended up encumbered by other issues, you know. So they had to cite that in a certain location and that impacted what could be done this direction. But if you look at gas stations throughout the region and those that, you know, have that wide open space, I mean, some of them seem to me to have too much parking area, but they they end up being able to accommodate traffic movement a hell of a lot better. And when you eliminate the parking spaces that are right in front of the dumpster now and you you gotta move the dumpster and you still end up having to accommodate truck deliveries, which I don't think we dealt with that effectively at all. I mean, you know, I think.
We actually did, they they promised us that they would be prior to seven o'clock and blah, 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 and we're not gonna be during peak hours and that never happened.
Doesn't work, but.
No, never happens.
So.
The truck showed up and we had to unload it, sorry.
Yeah, no, I, yep, it's, so, the way it is, so.
Yeah.
But you, you guys probably didn't imagine it was gonna be as popular as it is, right? I I'm surprised how popular it is.
Um, we figured we'd fairly popular, but we when we we listened to their traffic engineers and and we had peer review and they supported the documentation, but they're all thick as thieves, because, you know, next week, the guy that's doing the proposing is the other guy that's doing the review, so I mean, and we're not traffic people to be able to say this is a good idea or not a good idea. Um, I mean, we questioned some circular motions and stuff like that, but we didn't have any real, you know, the big thing I think is like the 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 non-passenger vehicles that plug up some of the circulation that's in there. And we never anticipated that.
No.
Yep, I don't think they did either, truthfully. I think they just made their studies on passenger vehicles and that was it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, so if we're ready to vote, then I will do a roll call vote. Jay Teach.
No.
Timothy Wheeler.
No.
Carolyn McDonald.
No.
And Tom Sanford, no. So zero in favor and four opposed.
And I'll write up the reports for those three in our six. Six?
Our six?
We have six.
We've already voted on them.
Yeah, I'll write up the reports.
Okay, I mean, we can, like I said, we, I printed it out, what Margaret sent to us, so we can.
You got the motions. You have the motions.
In the vote.
But we we have to hand the.
We have to read the article.
Usually we say, the planning board held a public hearing on sudden such a date and at that meeting, the planning.
Part of that, it was part of that thing she sent around.
So she's got that included in the motion?
Was at the bottom of the of the, so that was sent probably last Thursday, maybe?
So we just have to do it for these three?
Correct.
So there are two more River Bridge articles in the warrant.
You know, but but those are aren't zoning.
No.
And actually, the 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 second one we voted on was a modification to the development agreement, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Correct, but they also have another modification a development agreement modification in here, and then there's the the liquor license.
So the liquor license isn't a zoning.
Right.
The the modification actually to the development agreement in regard to the townhouses isn't a zoning article either, so we don't have to report on that. Although we we can say how we voted, but.
Sure.
It doesn't have to, we don't have to formally make a report in order for the the town meeting to proceed.
Correct, right, oh, oh, and this one's the public safety mitigation payment is what the last one is, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Huh. So I'm assuming if they don't get their townhouses, they're gonna pass over that last one.
Would make sense.
Either that or they're gonna have to pay all of it. Um, okay.
So, Tim, if you just wanna double check, I don't know whether you got that email from Margaret, if you don't, I can send it to you tomorrow.
Well, I'm looking at the motions. So like it says, I moved that the town amend the zoning bylaw section five forty home-based contracting business by adding a new five forty. The business must be owned and operated by a resident of the developing recommendation, planning board vote four to nothing.
Yeah.
I.
Is that good enough or not?
Well, you know, our reporters usually said we held a public hearing on sudden such a date and then on a subsequent date at a at a at a meeting of the board, we voted X.
Do it the way we always do it.
So I think that, and then that's included in the packet that that Eloise sends to the Attorney General, because this just indicates how we voted, I think.
Okay.
The notion that we held a public hearing on a certain date, we held a regular meeting and we voted probably is what she wants.
Okay.
Then that's easy enough to do, and they're still gonna, Barry's gonna say, and does the planning board have a recommendation? And we, you know, that's when we usually get up and read that, so. I'll do those.
Okay, thank you.
Looking for a motion to adjourn?
I will entertain one.